Again, Lord just give us wisdom to make good decisions for our staff, for our students, for our family and our people. It's the same.
Amen.
All right, pledges?
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Other side? Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
The mission statement for Tomball ISD is Tomball ISD empowers students to become impactful, contributing citizens by providing innovative, individually rigorous, and personally valuable educational experiences while partnering with the community.
Just did what you did.
Thank you, Ms. Salem, Ms. Krakke, Mr. Lamedowski. So, Board, we have no public comments on agenda items, so let's get to it. We have reports, and then we're going to go move into our considered and consent agenda. And then, we do have two folks that have signed up for comments on non-agenda items, so we'll hear from them at the tail end of our business meeting. So with that, I'd like to now turn over the meeting to the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Martha Salazar-Zamora, for reports.
Thank you so much, President, Dr. Pratt, members of the Board, those of you in the audience this evening. Tonight, we have one report, and that is of our procurement process. Our Chief Financial Officer, Zach Bowles, will present this report this evening. Mr. Bowles.
All right, I'm waiting for it to come up. Is it on your screens?
Yes. Well, not the presentation. There it is.
Okay, that's not showing right.
You've got it. The power's on.
Anybody know what's causing that? Okay, he's got it working up here. There it goes. Okay, can you hear me now? All right, President Pratt, Dr. Salazar-Zamora, members of the Board. As requested by the Board, tonight, we're going to take a look at and an overview or review of the Tomball ISD procurement process, as well as all of the regulations that apply to not only Tomball ISD but school districts across the state of Texas. So, as we move through the presentation, what we'll keep a focus on are all the different layers of procurement regulations that exist and impact operations for Tomball ISD and other school districts across the state and across the nation. We also want to take a look at the structure of our purchasing operations. We operate a little differently than some of our neighbors, so we want to talk through that a little bit, as well as look at the process for review and approval that all purchases in the district go through. In addition, we'll talk a little bit about how we ensure compliance is consistent, as well as what we do to make sure that our procedures are up to date and updated at all times. So, starting off with procurement regulations, it's important to remember that regulations are the guiding principles that provide a framework for public entities to acquire goods and services in an effective and ethical manner. They're also intended to ensure fairness or promote fairness in the procurement process, as well as intended to provide transparency and accountability in the use of public funds. All districts across the state of Texas, including Tomball ISD, operate under multiple layers of regulation. That includes at the federal, state, and local level. In addition to that, something that I don't have on the screen, we're also, with our child nutrition funds, we operate under different procurement guidelines that come from the Texas Department of Agriculture. So, in all, we've got four levels or layers of procurement regulations that impact how we do operations across the district. At the federal level, when we're utilizing federal funds, we have to comply with the Uniform Grant Guidance, which provides a consolidated set of rules for managing federal funds. But underneath that, specific to education, are the EDGAR regulations. Those come directly from the Department of Education, and those set the standards for administration, the administration of federal education funds, and how you use those in school districts. In addition to the EDGAR regulations, you have the federal acquisition regulations. Those are not typically involved in our day-to-day purchasing operations, but they do come into play if we're working with, if we were to work with any federal agencies or contractors that are receiving federal funds. So, we have to be aware of, in our purchasing department, as well as our Department of Federal Programs, all of the different layers of federal guidance that comes along with the use of federal funds. So, at any point in time, we have to make sure that we're in compliance with all three of these, and we have to know the interaction between all three and how they interact then with our state and local procurement regulations. The compliance requirements with the use of federal funds are very stringent, and there's four primary areas that we have to focus on when we're utilizing federal funds. The compliance there looks at, the first and most important is the supplement, not supplant, rule. So that means that all federal funds have to be supplemental in nature. They can't be used to replace local funds that are already there and providing funding for items like staffing, materials, contracted services. So this has to be completely supplemental when it comes to federal funds. We can't just replace existing expenses that are being covered by the general fund. There's also documentation requirements when it comes to approvals, to quotes, to price analysis. There's a lot of documentation that goes into what we have to be able to prove that we've utilized those funds in the correct manner. In addition, there are regular quarterly and annual reporting requirements that come along with our federal funds, and that's to ensure that there is transparency and accountability that we're utilizing those funds in the correct manner. And so that's done quarterly and annually, depending upon the federal grant that we're utilizing. And then, the procurement process is also very important in the role of federal compliance because we have to ensure that the procurement method that is being used is in compliance with what the federal government says we have to do. So, they have their own set of thresholds when it comes to what are considered micro purchases, large purchases, when procurement has to happen in a formal bid process, when it can be just quotes. And so, the procurement process becomes very important because in an audit, when we're audited by the, by TEA, who the federal funds flow through, any one of these areas, if we can't provide documentation and proof that we are meeting compliance in any one of these areas, those purchases and expenses can then be disallowed. And so, that just means that the federal funds would no longer pay for it, that we would have to repay the federal government for those expenses that we claimed in an inappropriate manner, and the general fund would then have to supplement the cost of what we've already expended. So, compliance becomes very important at the federal level because there are implications to not doing any one of these steps and meeting these compliance requirements. And from a federal standpoint, that audit can occur at any time. It's not set in stone after a certain date in the fiscal year. It can occur at any point in time, unannounced throughout the fiscal year, and we have to be able to respond immediately. Typically, within, we get 10 business days to respond to a federal audit and provide all the documents, supporting documentation to verify that we're in compliance. So, if we don't have those things available and ready to go, that's a hit that we can take as a district. And in my time here, we've not had a situation where we've had to repay for expenditures that were not in compliance. At the state level, the procurement regulation is primarily stated within Texas Education Code 44.031, although there does exist separate guidance and regulations for construction procurement. That's in the Texas Government Code, but for tonight's purposes, we'll strictly focus on the Education Code because that primarily pertains to our general fund, our primary operating fund within the district. And so, again, 44.031, that's going to go into all of the requirements when it comes to competitive procurement. And so that's going to set all the framework for school districts in the state. It provides a state-level framework where you had federal, now you've got another layer of state. When we move through this, or as we continue to move from federal to state to local, you'll notice that in some instances, the state requirements and regulations can be more restrictive. When it comes to federal funds, your requirement is to use the most restrictive set of procurement regulations that exist. So that could be at the federal level, it could be at the state level, or it could be at the local level. But when we talk about the general fund, it is strictly related to Texas Education Code 44.031. And so, again, it's primarily going to focus on the requirements, on when we have to competitively procure supplies, materials, contracted services. And so, it's going to focus on that, but it's also going to reemphasize the importance of compliance when it comes to transparency and making sure that we're utilizing taxpayer funding in the correct manner. So, in the Education Code 44.031, with competitive procurement, that is the required method of procurement for contracts valued at $50,000 or more in the aggregate. Well, the aggregate is another term that the state defines further as looking at categories of spend in a 12-month period. And it's not just a 12-month fiscal year. We're looking at that on a rolling, continuous 12-month period. So every day that we move forward is a 12-month look back to ensure that contracts, or what we call commodity codes, which are categories of like items that are being purchased, like tires, furniture, paper, we're looking at those commodity codes and analyzing that on a daily basis to ensure that we're meeting the correct method of procurement that's required by the state. So, once a commodity code reaches the $50,000 threshold, we're required then to go out for one of the four types of competitive procurement that's listed there. That could be a competitive seal proposal, a request for proposal, a request for qualifications, or the use of an inter-local contract. The first three there, the CSP, the RFP, and the RFQ, those can be quite lengthy processes that take roughly two to three months from your creation and establishment of standards and specifics for the bid, to advertising, to time for the vendors to respond, as well as then evaluation of all those responses, and then making sure that your timing is appropriate to get on the agenda for the Board to give approval. Because any formal bid requirement has to come to the Board for approval when we're over $50,000. Actually, it's $100,000 when we get to the next couple of slides, but the $50,000 requirement is when we have to move through a formal procurement process and a competitive bid. The inter-local contract typically in our line of our process, our procurement process, is going to refer to the utilization of purchasing cooperatives. And so, those purchasing cooperatives are essentially doing the legwork of what districts would have to do themselves. They're going out and doing formal bids, vetting vendors, they're meeting all the compliance of state and federal laws when it comes to procurement, and they're doing the legwork. For us, we're able to join those purchasing cooperatives to essentially piggyback off of the work that they've been doing. It alleviates some of the administrative burden on districts. For us, in specific, it's been very helpful because we have a team of two in our purchasing department. And that purchasing department is able to, you know, help facilitate and process over 9,000 purchase orders a year. But the use of purchasing cooperatives through an inter-local contract definitely helps to provide the ability to streamline those processes and still while meeting all of the compliance requirements under state and federal laws. When we talk about those commodity codes, we, the state of Texas does not define the commodity codes for school districts. In fact, if you went to any other school districts in the state of Texas, they're probably all using something a little bit different, whether they develop that internally, or they're using a form of the Texas State Comptroller's standardized list. Every school district across the state of Texas can track commodities or categories of items in the way that fits them best. We, in Tomball ISD, utilize the comptroller's listing. It provides a standardized coding structure that's followed, you know, by the state of Texas, but it also, for us, creates a standardization that continues, no matter who the leadership over the department is. It just keeps an ongoing standardization moving forward. There's consistency in what we're tracking and what we're looking at on a daily basis to determine whether or not we're meeting those procurement laws. Again, the use of those purchasing cooperatives for us, the benefit comes into play when we streamline those procurement processes. Obviously, it provides efficiency, but also ensures the compliance. When those purchasing cooperatives are able to, they can pool purchasing power of districts across the state, other governmental entities, to help provide ability to negotiate lower pricing on goods and services, and so we're able to take advantage of that. But we're also to take advantage of the access to a wide range of vendors. Vendors that maybe locally, there's not vendors in our area that could provide that type of service or that material for a specialized program or project, and we need something that's a little bit more, maybe that's located in another area of the state, but this purchasing cooperative already has them under contract. We don't have to then go out and do our own bid, take two to three months to potentially procure that item. That can streamline the process for our campuses and our departments. So we get access to a wide range of vendors very quickly with those partnerships with our purchasing cooperatives. At the local level, procurement regulation starts with the Board, and so that's through the adoption of local board policies that align with all procurement laws, but that are there to ensure ethical and transparent practices. The other component of a Board's responsibility here with the procurement process is to ensure that our procurement decisions are made in support of the district's mission, but at the same time maintaining fiscal responsibility. And we do so through that with the purchasing authority that's established through board policy, which is, you know, any single purchase of $100,000 or more is required to come through the Board for approval. Now, there are some exceptions to that that have been established through Board Policy CH Local, and I'll get into that in a second, but essentially, what your, the Board's responsibility, once you're past policy adoption, doesn't start in the procurement process until a contract is at $100,000 or more. And so, prior to that, the approval, the review is going to occur at the administrative level within the district, and then, once it reaches the $100,000 threshold, that's going to become an item for the Board to approve and review as well. So I mentioned Board policy. You have two sets of policy. It's Board Policy CH Legal and Local. The legal version of Board Policy CH is going to essentially be a restatement of all of the regulations that are required under state and federal laws that we have to follow. And so that's just going to recognize all of those laws, restate it, reference it, and then, as we move into Board Policy CH Local, that's going to then become tailored more towards Tomball ISD. Districts across the state are also going to have a CH Local, but their version of it is going to maybe differ in some way, and maybe that becomes the threshold of purchasing authority that's granted. That's at $200,000 for us for purchases. So, purchasing authority under Board Policy CH Local for Tomball ISD creates an exemption or exception to board approval for purchases under $200,000 when the purchase is using a previously approved board inter-local contract. So that might be an already existing contract with another governmental agency or another school district. The purchases that are made through purchasing cooperatives, a continuing purchase under a board-approved bid, so this would be a bid that was done locally through the Finance Department. Typically, when we do formal bids in-house, those are going to be in effect for three years. So there's going to be continuing purchases that occur underneath that already previously approved bid. And then, finally, the purchase of produce or fuel. Those four types of purchases are going to fall under an exception that's been created under Board Policy CH Local, and so, until that reaches $200,000 or more, that, those particular items will not come to the Board for review and approval. If a purchase or a contract does not meet one of those exceptions, then at $100,000, you'll see each one of those contracts come to the Board for review and approval. In addition to the purchasing authority, CH Local also establishes the requirement to, for the Superintendent to develop purchasing procedures and to implement the requirements of all state and federal laws. And so, that requirement there ultimately becomes the responsibility of the Finance Department, and that's one of our roles, is to create those purchasing procedures and implement them across the district. So with all of those regulations that we have to follow from the federal, from the state to the local, what does that really look like in practice for Tomball ISD? So I mentioned, we operate under a little bit different of a structure than our neighbors. We don't have buyers, what would be considered centralized procurement structure, where all of the buying is done in the central office through the purchasing department. It's not done by your campuses, it's not, you know, they're standardizing exactly what's being purchased for every campus across the district. We don't operate that way. We operate a two-man procurement department, but the decentralization for Tomball ISD essentially means that we've granted autonomy to our campuses and our departments to go out and make their own purchasing decisions. They find the products that are going to fit their needs, they find the vendors that can supply that product, and that allows them to have that autonomy, greater authority over their own decisions, but also allows them to tailor those purchasing strategies to meet the specific needs and objectives of their campus or department. And that localized decision-making is going to allow them to respond more quickly to any unique or new requirements or challenges that they may be facing on the campus or in their department. So those are sort of the characteristics of the decentralized procurement structure. So where finance comes into play, our role, again, is the development of procedures that align with federal, state, and local laws and policies. We provide training and support to all of our staff that are going to be making purchases. That's to ensure that there's consistency in the procurement process. We maintain district-wide vendor contracts for those formal bids that are done in-house, but also, we are in charge of setting up all vendors, maintaining and monitoring that all required vendor certifications and documents have been completed and submitted to the district, as well as maintaining an approved vendor list that we provide out to our campuses and departments that they can utilize in their purchasing decision-making. From a compliance and documentation review standpoint, every purchase order that runs through Tomball ISD runs through the purchasing department and is reviewed for compliance at every level, whether it be federal, state, or local. We are reviewing not only the procurement method, we're reviewing the types of items that are being procured, we're looking at, making sure that it's, how those items are being tracked with commodity codes, how they're being coded for budgeting purposes, to make sure that everything that we reflect in our financial data is truly accurate of the spend that's happening, whether it's for instruction, for maintenance, for transportation, we've got to make sure that all of those things are accurately reflected. And so, really, we're, when you boil down to it, the Finance Department is there for support and compliance, and then, we're going to run those formal bids as they're required and necessary. So, just running through what the process of a purchase in Tomball ISD would look like, obviously with that decentralized procurement structure, the identification of the need, the product, the product that's going to fit that need, and the vendor that could possibly provide that product are going to be initially identified at the campus or department level. There will be assistance from central office, our purchasing department, if there's questions, if there's concerns over, "I can't find a vendor, how do we locate somebody? There's nobody to provide this type of product, can you help me locate these types of things?" So we do provide that support. We're going to review the commodity codes at the campus and department level, but also with the assistance of our Finance Department, to make sure that if the commodity code threshold is, or the spend for that specific commodity code is under $50,000, state law allows for a more informal quote process. You don't have to go out for a competitive formal bid process or utilize an inter-local contract. If the commodity code has reached and exceeded $50,000, then we're going to be required to go through that competitive procurement method of purchasing. And so, we're going to monitor that, we're going to help the campuses and departments identify which method they can go through, and then that ties into then, how do we locate the vendors and make sure that, one, they're approved, they're able to be used, that they have all of their certifications on file, that they're active and they're ready to go. Once that's been identified, once all of that's been clarified as far as the procurement process is going to flow, the review and approval process that we go through is quite lengthy. There's many, many layers to it, depending upon the dollar value of the purchase itself, but at its base, every purchase is going to start at the campus and department level and get an initial review and approval done by the budget manager. That might be a principal, or director, a chief, whoever's the budget manager over that department or that campus is going to be the first level of approval in the processing of a purchase order. And once it's moved through that process, depending upon the funding source, you might actually add another layer in here for review by the Federal Programs Department, also by Curriculum and Instruction, our Chief Academic Officer. So there's, between one and two, there could also be additional layers of review and approval that go on. But once it's moved past step one, that's going to come directly to our purchasing department. Our two staff members there are authorized to approve purchase orders from $0 to $5,000 if compliance has been documented and verified. Once a purchase exceeds $5,000, whether it's a single item or PO in total, that's going to kick to the next level and require an additional approval from our Director of Finance. So each one of these layers builds upon the one before it. So, no matter what, the dollar value, the purchasing department is always going to review and approve. From $5,000 to $25,000, the Director of Finance has that final authority for approval. If it exceeds $25,000, less than $50,000, now you've got purchasing department approval, you've got the Director of Finance review and approval, and now it comes to the Chief Financial Officer to do an additional review and approval of the documentation of the coding of the vendors. All of that detailed information we've got to have for compliance is going through another layer of review and approval. After we exceed $50,000, $50,000 and up, that's going to require Superintendent approval, no matter what. So, then, we get into Board Policy CH Local. If we are exceeding $100,000, that's going to come up for Board approval. If it meets that criteria for an exception under Board Policy CH Local, that it's under $200,000 and meets one of those four criteria of types of purchases, then that's going to move forward with Superintendent approval. Once it exceeds $200,000, that would then require Board approval as well. So, if you're looking at a purchase over $100,000, one of our exceptions over $200,000... So if you're looking at a purchase over 100,000, one of our exceptions over 200,000, that purchase has gone through has gone through five levels of review and approval before it ever gets to the board and on the agenda for approval at a board meeting. And so quite an extensive amount of review and approval and time is spent there, depending upon the level of the the purchase, the dollar amount. Smaller purchases can can go through in the span of a few days, up to, you know, maybe a month, depending upon the timing of a board meeting. If we've got to get back on the agenda, if those don't line up right, it could take a month or more to to get those procurement processes through the through the whole the whole system. For us, when we talk about best practices, we're really talking about how do we continue to ensure compliance in our operations that is consistent across the district from campus to campus, department to department. And so for for us, it is our finance department's role is to continuously review our procurement procedures to make sure that we are in compliance with all new federal and state laws. Every session with the state government, with the legislature, there are typically changes to procurement policies and procedures that occur, so we have to re-implement those into our our new procedures and make sure that they flow through and and work with all our processes, and we get everybody up to date and and trained on how that compliance is going to work. So beyond just reviewing our processes and procedures, we're conducting conducting regular training, not only with our procurement staff, but all of the end-users out on the campus and department. We're we're going through new user training, whether that's somebody who's onboarding for the first time that's going to be doing procurement for a campus or department. We're also doing ongoing throughout the year, just like we do professional development. We'll bring in all of those administrative assistants and and those that wish to participate to come in and do training on procurement specifically for that, just to make sure that everybody continues to be up to date on the regulations and compliance requirements. And then within the department, the finance department, purchasing specifically, we participate in peer reviews. And so that's done through the Texas Association of School Business Officials. We send in a full packet detailing all of the procurement operations within the district, our internal our procedures and processes, along with board policies, to demonstrate that we're in in compliance with state and federal law, but that also our internal processes and procedures are are meeting what's expected as or what's considered our latest and best practices. And so that's done through the Texas Association of School Business Officials. That's a volunteer committee of, you know, purchasing professionals from districts across the state that are coming in, and they're reviewing that on an annual basis. We participated in that for the last three years. We wanted to to go after a peer review of our our information, our practices, and we've been able to receive recognition under the Purchasing Award of Merit for the last three years. And so that that helps us just to make sure that we're in alignment with the best practices across the state. In addition to that, like I mentioned earlier, we're we're under the gun of audits at any given point in time. But beyond what comes from the state level, the federal level, we also do internal local audits. So that's looking at audits of our campus activity funds and our general procurement processes, just to make sure that those funds that live in a campus campus activity fund, that they're following the same procurement processes that we require, that the state requires, and to make sure that it's following all local practices and procurement procedures. At the state level, again, we talked about, there's a there's an annual requirement for a financial audit. In that financial audit, part of their testing goes through formal bids that the district have has done to make sure that we've complied with all requirements regarding the formal competitive procurement, whether that be an RFP or an RFQ process, as well as they're going to look and test actual purchases, the actual POs that are done, the expenditures that the district has, and they're going to go through that, and they're going to review it for compliance with that state law, that federal law, to make sure that how we said we procured that item was in compliance with what was required, depending upon the threshold of of the commodity codes and whatnot. So there's there's quite a bit of review when it comes to our our external financial audit that occurs at the end of every fiscal year. But again, then, we have our federal audits that occur at any given point in time. And so no matter whether it's local, state, federal, our department is is making sure that all of our documentation is in place, that we are fully documented as far as compliance with with all required laws at any given point in time, because, like I said, when those unannounced audits come, you get about a 10-day window of when you can respond and make sure that you've got the appropriate documentation, or they will disallow those I'm going to move into questions.
Okay, you can let me go first. All right. Hey, so since we were just talking about the, thank you, Zach, great presentation. Appreciate it. Question on the audits real quick. In addition to, like you said, local audits, haven't we also had our our third-party auditor, financial auditor also audit our procurement process, maybe focused in construction or in federal funds, but hasn't that third-party also done that as well?
We we have, and so that third-party is actually a separate division of that group, but it was a a focus on internal control practices regarding procurement, accounts payable. So it hit payroll, all of the functions from a process that would involve funding leaving the district or coming into the district. And so that internal control audit was was completed and did have a focus on procurement as well.
And if my memory serves me correct, there were no material findings, no weaknesses. It was a clean audit?
Yes.
Okay, good. Help me a little bit on the aggregate, okay? So it's a commodity code. So you're using tires as an example.
Right.
So are you saying on the purchase order, if the commodity code tires exceeds the 50,000, you go to the the next rigorous level? Or are you saying throughout the district, if the district spends more than 50,000 on tires, which I know we do, then it must go, that commodity then must go through this this more rigorous process?
That that's correct. So the commodity code, the commodity code applies to the district as a whole. So no matter who's purchasing the tires, that, you know, should that be maintenance or transportation, whoever needs to purchase that, that commodity code serves the district as a whole. So no matter who's using it, if the threshold is at 50,000 or above, it has to go through that that formal procurement or competitive procurement process.
Okay. And that's, like you said, 12-month rolling.
Yes.
So you're constantly looking at when that commodity code trips the switch, and then for anybody, it's got to go to that next level.
That's correct. And so there's there will be instances where you could have a commodity code that's right on the threshold of 50,000, and maybe a purchase occurred yesterday, and as I move to tomorrow, or it maybe it occurred, you know, 12 months ago yesterday, and as I move to tomorrow, now it's fallen off of that calculation. And so you may be under that $50,000 threshold. But so it's a daily look at where our compliance needs to needs to land.
And I think I just wanted to just confirm with you, I I'm pretty sure I heard you right or understood it right, but on the decentralization, while the the campus or department may run the 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 process, it still goes through all the same triggers with respect to approvals?
Yes. Yes, the decentralization really pertains to their ability to identify the products that'll fit their need and the vendors that can supply it. From there, everything runs through the finance department for compliance review.
Great, thank you.
How many directors of finance do we have?
We have one.
Just one?
Yes.
I just thought the $5,000 number seemed kind of low for them to be to for, because we're talking about autonomy for the principals. I just thought 5,000 sounded low. That's my comment, for to be able to sign off on purchases.
So so in that in that approval threshold, the the principal signs off on whatever the PO is. So whether it be 5,000 or more, the principal is a layer of approval. The purchasing department has to take that next step. So what we're doing is making sure that along that level, and depending upon the dollar threshold, there's just more eyes on the process, on the compliance requirements that go along with it.
And then on the flip side, let's say a principal didn't want to mess with that step, could they split and get two, two, $3,000 checks instead of one, six thousand?
That is actually.
What's in place to prevent that?
So that's actually a pro a process that we review in our finance department. So what we watch for ours, what you what you would consult, what you would say is, I'm going blank on my word here. It's consecutive purchasing. So what we do is we do watch and flag for those type of things. So when we see something come through with a flat dollar amount, and then we see another one come through with a flat, we're going to trigger on that. We have flags set in place to try and catch that and make sure that we then go back to the campus and say, hey, this is, this looks to be the exact same thing in a separate PO. We need to put all of those things together, and then it flows through that approval process.
I just a comment. I learned something. I didn't realize we had such a lean staff in purchasing.
Yes, very lean.
Yeah, two people. And the 9,000 purchase orders per year is the total district or just what they are processing?
That's that's the total district.
Total district.
Running through the the finance department.
So the co-op, the co-op piece makes a lot of sense, right? You don't have the people to go out and do the research or investigation unless a campus does or a department does. And so when you look at kind of the the percentage of our business going through a co-op, can you characterize that? How much of the co-ops are we leveraging for that type of procurement that fits in the the bucket that you described?
I would say at least 80% of our our purchases probably run through that in some manner. When we do formal bids, they're typically very specific to fit a certain need. But also, when we we go out and we look at our bids, we're looking at opportunities to engage local vendors. So we have specialty item bids or fine arts bids or athletic bids that can encompass vendors that are local in the district, maybe, you know, more localized, not regional or or national brands, that we can bring in and allow to to funnel, you know, some of the business back into the community. So we do attempt to do as many of those as we can when they're in categories that that need to that need and require a formal bid process. But it's also why we utilize the Comptroller's commodity code listing. Through that, there's, there's probably, there's well over 1,000 different combinations and different types of commodity codes for items. And as we utilize those combinations for categories of items, we can pull down on what that threshold for the the formal bid process is, which allows us to utilize more local vendors.
And that co-op pricing is set. It's it's all the folks who who are part of that buy cooperative have already worked on set pricing. And so your purchasing team doesn't spend time negotiating. They leverage the existing pricing, and if they so choose to to purchase, then that's what they draw from.
Yes.
Okay. Let's let's talk about the review and approval process that you described. If there's a conflict of interest in any of that path, could you describe the processes in place to remove the conflict of interest?
Yeah. So so definitely, there's really two layers to it. There's the staff side that exists for the for district employees, but there's also a conflict of interest that has to be completed by all vendors that want to do business with the district. And so we monitor the conflict of interest forms that come in from our vendors. We make sure, you know, if there is any, we've got those identified, where where that conflict may exist. Do the same thing with on the employee side. When that conflict exists, what we make sure to do is we take that individual out of the procurement process completely. So if a campus teacher is, has a conflict of interest with a vendor that that campus wants to use, we are making sure that in the process of review, that that teacher or or other staff member is not involved in the review process and 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 promotion of that vendor in any way. So so they have to be removed from the the procurement process altogether. At the board level, we maintain those conflict of interests, documents on our website. And so at the board level, what occurs is, and this has occurred since I've been in the district, is that when there is a conflict of interest, that board member abstains from voting on that that particular item. And so that pulls that board member out of the approval process, and that's how the conflict of interest has been addressed through the board.
To include the superintendent, right?
That's correct.
If there's a conflict of interest with the superintendent, then other staff members follow that.
Yes, we have an alternate.
You have an alternate process to address it if the superintendent has a conflict of interest.
That's correct.
Got it. Thanks, Zach.
And and the limits, let me kind of go along there. The limits that are delegated to the superintendent are delegated solely to the superintendent. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Not superintendent or delegatee.
That's correct.
It's solely delegated to the superintendent. So if she can't approve something at her level due to a conflict of interest, it must go to the board.
There's not specifically the requirement in that, but what we would do is we would evaluate that specific item as an alternative designee. That does exist. So if if Dr. Z has a conflict there, then if that is under the threshold that doesn't require board approval, it would, I believe, our alternative signer on that would be Dr. Schindler-Wolff. But if it requires approval by the board, then it would come there.
Got you.
Hey, Zach, quick question. Under the decentralized procurement structure, every entity still has to use the district ABL, correct?
Yes.
And if they want to purchase from a different entity that's not on our ABL, how do you add companies or individuals to that? What's the process for that?
So so typically, because we're not the buyers in the finance department, if we get, maybe we get requests from vendors that want to be be utilized in the district, or we get requests directly from the campuses themselves, we aren't necessarily the purchasers. And so we're going to evaluate that request, who the vendor is. We're also going to send it out to the campuses. It ultimately becomes, is there a desire to use that vendor? We don't want to just expand our vendor list if there's no real interest in utilizing the vendor themselves. But we will take all of that documentation if it comes unsolicited. We keep a packet on file so that we have something to go back to if, you know, that particular item that that vendor can provide becomes a need within the district, we can go say, hey, we've got this vendor wants to be, you know, wants to come through this process and be utilized in the district, you might give them a consideration. The process for actually becoming a vendor sort of depends on the commodity threshold. And so if that commodity is over $50,000 that that vendor is looking to provide services or products in, then we have to, that vendor only becomes available if they're a part of one of the purchasing cooperatives that we're a member of, or we've gone out and done a formal bid that they've become awarded on. If the commodity code is less than the 50,000, because there's no requirement from state law to to go through a competitive procurement process, that vendor can be, you know, fill out all the vendor paperwork and documentation, and we can set them up and get them ready for use by any campus or department in the district.
Thank you. Your light is on. Are you, do you have any questions? Okay. Any any other questions for the superintendent on the procurement process from any board member? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Bowles. That concludes the reports for this evening, so I will turn the meeting back over to you, President Dr. Brett.
Thank you so much. We will get right to it with our consent agenda, followed by our considered agenda. So moving to the consent agenda, item A, Alpha, approve the minutes of the Tomball ISD workshop meeting. Actually, I'm not going to read all the consent items, sorry. Do I have a motion?
Do I have a motion, um, regarding the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lewandowski, seconded by Mrs. Salem. Um, do any board members have any additional questions of the superintendent regarding this item before I open up the floor for discussion? Hearing none, is there any discussion by the board for the board? Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, motion carries unanimously. Okay, considered agenda. Item A, accept a grant in the amount of 200,000 from the Tomball Regional Health Foundation to support campus-based behavioral health initiatives. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. McStravic, seconded by Mr. White. Do any board members have additional questions of the superintendent regarding this item before I open up the floor for discussion? Hearing none, is there any discussion by the board for the board?
Mr. President? Hey, I just want to say real quick, um, I just wanted to again give a shout out to Tomball Regional Health Foundation. They have been such a wonderful partner to us, um, provided the opportunity, that grants have provided us an opportunity to provide more services to our, our, our students. So just a shout out to, to that group and, and, and what they've done.
Yeah. Ditto.
Yep, we are very grateful for their generosity.
Absolutely.
And it continues. Thank you to Dr. Webb and the team to continue to seek the dollars.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. McStravic. Any other discussion by fellow board members? Okay, a motion has been made and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item B, approve an addendum to the ClearHope contract extending the date to June 30th, 2025, which will add the spring semester for an additional $100,000, bringing the grand total of this contract to $190,635. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
A motion was made by Amysa Salem, a seconded by Mr. McStravic. Do any board members have any additional questions of the superintendent regarding this item before I open up the floor for discussion? Hearing none, uh, is there any discussion by the board for the board?
So the 100,000 that we're adding to, we're getting to use the money from the grant that we just approved to cover that 100,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Am I understanding that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, a motion has been made and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item C, approve the instructional calendar for the 2026-2027 school year as recommended by the Tomball ISD Calendar Committee. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Lewandowski. Uh, do any board members have any additional questions of the superintendent regarding this calendar item before I open up the floor for discussion? Okay, any discussion by the board for the board? I'd just like to say, Karen, as always, fantastic job, 187 days, got the constraints on the front end, got constraints all along that journey, and, uh, and getting us out the door by Memorial Day is a heck of a squeeze. And I love the fact that, uh, we're doing this, uh, with that additional year so that families and the community can plan appropriately. So thank you for the hard work that, and your leadership there. Thank you, Dr. Z, for asking Karen to do that job. Okay, any other discussion? A motion has been made and it has been seconded. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously. Item D, approve Tasby general liability and automobile liability insurance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. McStravic, seconded by Ms. Bass. Okay, thank you. Uh, do any board members have additional questions of the superintendent regarding this insurance item before I open up the floor for discussion? Okay, any discussion by the board for the board? A motion has been made and it has been seconded. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item E, award RFP 979-24/26 FFA project show animals to multiple vendors for the total amount of 334,000, funded through campus activity funds. Uh, the contract term will be valid from March 18th, 2025 through December 31st, 2028. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Salem, seconded by Mr. McStravic. Do any board members have additional questions of the superintendent regarding this, uh, show animal contract, uh, before I open up the floor for discussion?
Hey Martha, real quick, and, and you may need to defer, but, um, so I noticed in the, you know, in the, um, summary information that, or the backup, um, prices can vary.
Absolutely.
And so I guess the, the main thing I just wanted to confirm with you is, even though we approve this now, that doesn't mean that if a vendor on this that we approve now jacks their price up three times what the market is, that we can't go somewhere else, correct?
Correct.
We're not locked into that vendor.
No, we would hope that wouldn't happen, but in the event that-
Yeah. Good, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Sure, good point.
Okay, any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, hearing none, any discussion by the board for the board? Hearing none, a motion has been made and it has been seconded. Um, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item F, approve the employment of professional personnel to work under a probationary contract, a one-year term contract, a one-year term dual assignment contract, one-year contract, multi-year contract, multi-year term contract and extension of multi-year contracts for the 2025-2026 school year at the Tomball ISD schedule, subject to assignment. Four, adaptive physical therapists, athletic coordinator slash head coach, athletic trainer dash assistants, athletic trainers, audiovisual technicians, behavior coaches, behavior specialists, content specialists, coordinators, counselors, diagnosticians, librarians, licensed specialists in school psychology or LL, uh, LSSP, LOTC instructors, nurses, occupational therapist assistants, occupational therapists, orientation mobility specialists, physical therapists, program specialist, ROTC instructors, special education teachers, speech pathologist assistants, speech pathologists, teachers, testing coordinators, Vietnamese teacher, visually impaired teachers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lewandowski, seconded by Mrs. Salem. Uh, do any board members have any additional questions of the superintendent regarding any of these contract items before I open up the floor for discussion? Okay, any discussion by the board for the board? I'd just like to, uh, make a comment and thank Dr. Z. Um, you know, the, the variety of contracts is sort of, it's a lot.
There are many different types, absolutely.
And I really appreciate the additional, um, document you and Dr. Lee Wright prepared.
Correct.
Um, I'm actually going to stick this in my, in my book, just so I have this, so I can constantly refer to, what are the codes, uh, what are the different types of term contracts, um, be it continuing, probationary, dual, non-certified, very helpful.
Good.
Um, just to understand the complexity of what, um, uh, you and your team are managing. So thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you to Dr. Wright for submitting that.
Yeah. Any other comments by the board? Okay, a motion has been made and it has been seconded. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the considered agenda portion of our meeting. Uh, we will now move to public comments on non-agenda items. We have, um, two individuals that have signed up for public comment on non-agenda items. And I need to, uh, make sure that they're here and then, um, read some words here. So Mr. Dan Cranford, are you here? Mr. Cranford. Uh, Ms. Megan Jasper, are you here? Okay, maybe as I get through the, the, the next piece, if Ms. Jasper shows up, please help me to make sure I know she's here. Okay, so we'll now proceed with public comments on non-agenda items. The Board encourages comments about the district from members of the public. However, speakers are required to conduct themselves with proper respect and decorum in addressing the Board of Trustees, and in all conduct during a board meeting. Individuals who do not conduct themselves in an orderly and appropriate manner will receive a verbal warning and may be asked to leave the meeting. There was a comment that was made to me after the, the last meeting that, um, adjustments had been made to, um, uh, our decorum, and the reality is they haven't. Uh, the meeting protocols and rules of decorum are what an individual, when they sign up to speak, actually have to acknowledge, um, and agree to, and I'm simply just reading now, the additional words that an individual, uh, who signs up agrees to. So that's the difference. So the public comment period will not be used to air personal grievances, make political endorsements, or for political campaign, uh, purposes, nor discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings. Speakers shall address all comments to the Board as a whole and not to individual trustees. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience, um, um, shall not be allowed. This time is for the receipt of public comment, not debate. The Board unfortunately will not enter into dialogue with citizens. Questions from the Board will be for clarification purposes only. Public comment will not be used as a time for problem solving or reacting to comments made, but rather for hearing, as we want to, from the citizens for informational purposes only. The Board may assign staff to provide information requested by the speaker during the public comment, and I think we've got a really good track record of doing that. The Board member, or the Board may elect to defer public comment on specific issues that appear on the regular agenda until that specific item is addressed. Anger, rudeness, ridicule, obscene or profane language, impatience, lack of respect for others, personal attacks, are just, they're not acceptable. Demonstrations in support or opposition to a speaker or idea are not permitted. I, as the Board President, responsible for maintaining this order. Failure to abide may result in the forfeiture of the speaker's right to speak. In the event that, um, the Board President directions are not followed, our school resource officer, uh, is here to help, uh, maintain that order. So, um, Dr. Z, I don't believe any of the information I have indicates that a member of the public, uh, to speak needs a translator tonight, so no need to, um, have that-
You are correct.
Okay, so time does not need to be doubled by according to the law. Um, we're going to use an electronic timer, uh, visible on the right side of the podium. The first one minute will be displayed in green. An audible tone will sound when the speaker has one minute remaining and the display will change to yellow. Another tone will sound when 10 seconds remain and then the display will change to red. At the end of three minutes, an audible tone will sound to end the session. Uh, just closing here, in addition, the Board has adopted policies to provide prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns for employees, students, or their parents and the general public. Copies of our district policy on public comment and filing complaints are available on the district website. Thank you for your concern regarding our school district. And Mr. Cranford will hear from you now.
Good evening. Couple of things, I, I asked some questions, uh, last month at the meeting. I, I didn't ever see any answers to those. Concerning the policy of not calling a department or a person out by name, I mean, everyone here is a manager of a public trust. Have we forgotten whose money that is, who we're managing, whose money we're managing? I mean, I would love to see some real accountability. Like, if you're doing something, stand here and take it. Take the criticism, by name. Your, your elected officials and appointed officials, all here. So, you know, I would love to see some changes in that. Let's see here, um, hey, I appreciate the, uh, presentation you just gave. One thing I really wanted to know is, if you could define competitive for me, because I brought some stuff up last month about how the bids came in and one of the companies wasn't even certified in the product that you guys were buying.
Hey, Mr. Cranford, you're here to speak on the bond, I believe, right?
Uh, I, I am. I'm gonna get to that.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, because we have to talk about financial responsibility, uh, with that bond. I mean, I don't know if you guys know this or not, but school choice is gonna pass. It's gonna pass. And I really want to know how you're gonna guarantee you're not gonna raise taxes if you lose funding. I mean, obviously the goal is to be an attractive school district, right? We want enrollment, we want more people here, but chances are, you'll probably lose some people. How are you still going to pay that bond if you lose out? Um, I'm very curious about that. Let's see here, 80% of our purchases are going through a co-op. Have we looked into how these co-ops work? Because it's not saving us any money at all. So basically what happens is, somebody goes to bid something, they bid it through the co-op, they get charged an extra 2% to 5%, they pass that on to you, the school district, right? So you pay that, and then you get a portion of that back, and then they also fund groups like Tasby, which has kind of been labeled as a, you know, taxpayer-funded lobbying group. Um, and I, I see that our wagon is hitched really tight to that. Um, so I have some issues there. And then I was asked, at the last meeting, after the meeting, what my boss would think of my behavior at the Tomball ISD school board meeting. Well, he sat on the school board, up in the Dallas area, and he said, apparently what you're saying is hitting pretty close to home, so triple down, let's Doge it, let's see what's going on. But yeah, the, uh, the co-ops, man, they're not saving any money, we gotta figure that out. We've got, we've got to be a lot more responsible with the dollars that we're using. But 80% of the purchases, that's, that's a staggering number, but thank you for, for telling us that tonight. Appreciate y'all.
Okay. Okay, so Board, um, so I'm understanding that, uh, Ms. Jasper is not here, won't be here this evening, so wanted to just give her, uh, about a 10-second pause here to, in the event she walks in. Uh, out of respect for her taking the time to sign up and our opportunity to hear her comments. Okay, I'm going to close the portion of the meeting, uh, where we received public comments on non-agenda items, um, and then move to, um, uh, we're gonna go into a closed session, but before I do that, I wanted to, uh, create an opportunity for, uh, board comments. If there are any board members that would like to make comments, uh, it'd be great to, uh, do that now, uh, before we head into closed session. So I'll open up the floor. Mr. McStravic, you've been recognized.
I have something to, um-
Ms. Bass, sorry.
Just trying to find it.
Believe it's the out-of-state field trip was the subject?
Yes, yes. Do you know that I was gonna speak on that?
I had a feeling.
Yeah, so I just, sometimes some of these items in our consent agenda get kind of crushed together, but, um, one of the items for the Tomball Memorial High School cheer program to take, I think they asked for, for people to go to Memphis, and, um, that's a really cool thing that I think both of our cheer programs on the Tomball Red and Tomball Blue side do is they, they do a fundraiser before camp for St. Jude. And so they all, and Tomball Memorial just so happened to raise the most money, and they were offered to go to Memphis, and, not the entire team, but a couple of representatives and their cheer coach, um, who has been before with another school, and she brought that fundraiser to our school. It's one of those things that the kids are, you know, filling out and writing letters and you think like, okay, maybe people will donate, but so many people in our community donated, and I don't know the exact, uh, dollar amount that came in, but it raised more than any other school that participated, so that's exciting.
And, and that was-
And that was national?
Yes.
That's not just Texas or regional?
Yeah, that's not local to Texas.
It's St. Jude's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
That's outstanding for the students and our community. That shows that generosity and then that spirit of our students to give to others. I love that. Thank you for sharing.
Any other board comments? Okay, hearing none. We will now move to step into closed session. "The Board of Trustees will convene in a closed meeting for the purposes authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, including but not limited to the following section and purposes: Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with board attorney regarding all matters as authorized by law; Texas Government Code 551.072, deliberation regarding purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property; Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation regarding appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, including but not limited to superintendent evaluation; and Texas Government Code 551.076, deliberation regarding security, personnel, or devices." No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting. The time is now 6:50 PM Central. We'll now step into closed session. Thank you very much.